Good morning. I'm gaveling us to order. This time, I noticed that County Attorney, we did not post that we were going to do invocation, but I think it's all right to call for the invocation and ask you to rise and then please remain standing as we give the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and Texas flags. Commissioner Gonzalez? Would you lead us in prayer?
Lord God, Heavenly Father, here we are today in this special meeting. Help us to make the right decisions for the right things. Lord, we give you thanks for everything you've given us, the strength, the courage, the wisdom, and knowledge to continue to provide the right things for this community. Lord, we give you thanks for allowing us for us to be here today and help those that are trying to also meet their mission. Lord, we give you thanks just for blessing us and blessing this court and bless those people that need your help, especially during the holidays. Lord, we ask you to be with them, to pray for them, and to guide them. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Today is Monday, December 9th, 2019, and we are at Nuasis County Courthouse, 901 Leopard, third floor, and the time is 9:05 a.m. And for the clerk's record, I do certify that all commissioners are present, and indeed we do have a quorum. Timothy, would you come and give us our safety briefing?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, ma'am. We're meeting today on the third floor of the Nuasis County Courthouse located at 901 Leopard Street. Our restrooms are located on the right-hand side of the third-floor atrium as you exit the Commissioners' Court past the Human Resources Office. A fire extinguisher is also located in the rear of the courtroom. In addition, there are five fire extinguishers located throughout the third-floor atrium immediately outside the courtroom. An AED is located on the right wall as you exit the courtroom between the Human Resources Office and the restroom. Participants responsible for dialing 911 and event emergency are Tyner and Edward. Participants who are certified to conduct CPR if required are Dale and Margaret from the Commissioners' Court Administration Office. In case of evacuation, Ari Greshwater will be down the atrium stairs immediately outside the courtroom. Proceed out the double doors located on the La Pan side of the courthouse and muster across the street in the parking lot. In case the need for shelter in place, we remain in the building and await further instructions from the Nuasis County Sheriff's Office. Once again, our shared safety topics for today are overhead hazards, and that concludes my safety brief. Judge?
Thank you so much, Timothy. Edward, would you bring forward the clipboard? And I notice we have a lot of guests, and that's welcome. If you have a comment that is not an agenda item, we're going to ask that you come forward at this time, but if you would like to make comment, and of course, we welcome that, for an agenda item, you just need to properly designate that. So for those that are not on the agenda, I see just one, and that's Ms. Flo East. And even though we all know Flo, Flo, just for the record, would you state your name and the address?
Flo East, 1605 Yorktown Boulevard. Ho, 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 I'm making a list and checking it twice, and I've hand-delivered invitations in the envelope, and I noticed you opened yours, Judge, for the opening ceremony of the Nuasis County Junior Livestock Show. The numbers are looking great. We're going to have a bumper year. We're so excited. But we are starting a little bit later. Instead of the eight o'clock time, we're doing it at 10 o'clock, so please come out, have breakfast, and we'll introduce all of you. You know, you're a major part of the show. You help us keep it going and running, and we greatly appreciate that. And I would like an RSVP if you have a second or if you can't make it or can, because we don't want to leave, we don't ever want to leave anyone out. So have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I'll see you in January at the Stock Show. Thank you.
And before you leave, Flo, I just signed up, I just signed up as well to make comment about the Stock Show, so I can echo yet another way that we're going to have a, I like the way you said that, a bumper year, and that is on January the 11th, we're going to have a very special night in Old Nuasis at the fairgrounds, and the whole purpose is to bring in new people, new corporate stewards to the Junior Livestock Show. It's going to be a dinner and a dance, and thanks to Commissioner Vaughn, we're going to have J.R. Castillo and over, oh my gosh, I just forgot, unwound, unwound. And we actually, Sheriff Hooper is going to come onboard and be a part of, we've got great opportunities for all commissioners if they want to participate, and it's just an opportunity to have a way to get excited before the big event begins and really to demonstrate how much this is a Nuasis County event. We have 4H coming as far, well, really represented by all four precincts. So anyway, thanks to you, we are, when you've called the number for more information, it's my understanding that it goes to the Stock Show, and we have a website where people can buy tickets, so a night in Old Nuasis.
There are not enough words to express how much we appreciate you doing this, and I would like to get, I'll get with Maggie and get the other information, because we're trying to share that on our Facebook page and where people can buy tickets and so forth.
Right. And we want people to enjoy their holidays and obviously get this on their calendars, but if you haven't heard about it, don't worry, all good things are coming with details.
Okay. Thank you all. Bye-bye.
Okay, I'll give everybody, I noticed we had some more people, this is the time for public comment, non-agenda. Okay, we're going to move on then to the regular agenda items, and we have a report on the pricing and award of sale in Nuasis County, limited tax refunding bonds, Series 2019. With us from Estrada Inojosa is Bobby Vireal. Boy, do I love good news on a Monday morning. Come tell us all about it.
Good morning, Judge.
I already have the cheat sheet, so I know about it, but...
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
And when you brag, brag loudly, sir.
Bobby Vireal, for the record, from Estrada Inojosa. Again, this past week, we were looking at pricing last Thursday, a sale of two bonds, refunding the $40 million tax notes from the ones that you sold back in October. And then also, if you, actually, if you go to page two of what they're giving you right now, so you had a $40 million tax note that we were refunding, and there was also a 2010 refunding of a bond from 2010, which had about $8.8 million. If you look at the middle columns where it says Tax Rate Analysis Plan of Finance 11-7-19, at that time during November, we were projecting on those middle two, the middle three boxes above, if you look at the middle one and the one to the right, we were looking at 3.08% interest and about 1.77% interest on the other. And if you turn to the next page, on page three...
Green saver. Turn to page, oh, there we go. Not that I didn't mind seeing corporal, but there we go.
So yes, if you go to page three, what we did indeed get, and I know we called the judge and Tyner and Dale to see if we could move up the pricing, because last week the market went towards your favor, and so we wanted to move it up by a day, and that was a good way, a good time for us to strike. So we did get actually 2.784% and 1.5% interest as opposed to the ones I showed you before, 3.08 and 1.7. So...
And of course, as we say in plain South Texas language, that means we saved a lot of money, Bobby?
Yes, ma'am.
And can you provide an estimate on, or, and I think, or maybe Dale, would you be able to give the court a feel for the range of the dollars that we saved with those basis points?
Well, if you look at the columns, if you go to the bottom column of what the 40 million was going, the amount of payments you were going to have on page two, it was going to be 57 million roughly, and since we got 2.784%, it's actually going to turn out to be about 55 and a half million. So that's about 1.75 million less than we had anticipated, so that was favorable to you. On the further right one, the refunding, oops, there you go. On the one to the right, the refunding of the 8.7 million, we were looking at about 369,000 of savings, but it turned out to be 398,000 of savings, so that was 30,000 more savings than we had anticipated. And again, those are, on the 40 million, those roughly about 30 percentage basis points better than we had anticipated, and about 27 basis points better on the refunding. The refunding only has, the smaller refunding only has about three years left to go. But again, if you look at the debt service between the two years, on the larger one, what we were anticipating was about 1.571 million, and what we're getting right now is a 1.471 million, so that's about $100,000 better in debt service payments for you. Again, your INS tax rate is going to remain the same at 4.2. It's just your issuer contribution will go down a bit, so it gives you a little more flexibility into the future. But with that, again, I want to thank the court and allowing us to move forward a little quicker, because we did get a better, we did get better rates last week, they fell a bit, so...
That's what I was wondering, if we made the right call?
Yes, we did.
Good. Commissioners, any questions for Bobby this morning? I know we just gave you the analysis here, but I know that you're available by telephone if you have any detailed questions, but the end result is incredibly positive and favorable to Nuasis County. And I'm really grateful that, you know, I mean, obviously, we set forth a timeline that we thought was in our best interest, but because you're watching the market carefully and you saw a trend that we could take advantage of, you made the right call, and we were able to make the decision, and we really appreciate that.
Well, thank you, and it's a pleasure working with you, and I think this county's moving in the right direction.
Thank you, Bobby. Any other, no action, Commissioners, just receiving the report. Moving on to number two, we have a very serious matter to discuss, and we have a variety of staff members here with us to bring this forward, and that's to discuss and consider a course of action for the rehabilitation and restoration of the Nuasis County Courthouse facade, including any possible implementation of safety measures. The next item is in relationship to that item, but we're going to take it one step at a time, and let's assume that we know nothing. In other words, take us back maybe, what, seven, eight days when the incident occurred?
Very well. Good morning once again, Judge, Commissioners, ma'am. About a week ago Saturday, we had some facade fall off the tower portion of the Nuasis County Courthouse and land on top of the atrium, which did do some damage. Also, with some of that facade falling off, it also damaged the roof up there as well. So we were tasked with, first, how are we going to protect our property? Two, how are we going to keep the safety safe? And three, how are we going to fix that issue up there? So myself, Juan, the public engineer, Rudy from Castro, the Fire Marshal's Office, last Friday, we did a tour outside the courthouse to see with the less amount of impact on the county and in and out of the courthouse, what was the best avenues we could take to protect the citizens and our employees. So on the diagram before you, I'm pretty sure that most of us had it up there right now. Can everybody see it?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, you'll notice, orientate yourself, you're on the La Pan side, so right now we'd be sitting on the La Pan side, so just familiarize yourself with where we're sitting right now. As you'll see on the Leopard side, on the Mastina Street side right there, the red barricade on the Leopard side, that's the barricade allowing, that will not allow traffic in and to out of the courthouse. The area, it's in turquoise blue there, that area there is to be fenced off, and the reason for that is that exit on the second floor is going to have to be closed to ensure the public doesn't get hit by any fallen debris during this phase, phase one. Any questions thus far? Very well.
I just want to allow Commissioners to make sure that they've had the opportunity to see the atrium and the damage that was done to the glass, and quite frankly, I mean, the stone is, of what nature, actually? I've been wondering, is it a quartzite? Is it a granite?
It's with a T.
If you don't mind, court recognizes David Richter.
Judge, it is a travertine marble.
Oh, it is a travertine.
It's a small tile of travertine, of course, but if you get big chunks of small tiles, it gets to be large, but it's...
But it's a piece of stone, and therefore, I guess I'm trying to reiterate how important it is.
No, it's very, it's very important, and depending upon how it...
It can hurt you.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's what we wanted to make sure.
Yes, ma'am, and that's the reason why we, this diagram here, you'll notice that the red marks on the diagram are barricades that will restrict the access to public and workers coming into the courthouse for safety measures. The, I don't know what color you want to call that one, the pink-looking color, that's going to be a tarp or canvas with some scaffolding to ensure that we control, still have access to the Sheriff's Department office and employees, and that is assigned parking in that area as well. So that is there for safety as well.
And so you're asking the court at this time to approve the safety measures and, or the implementation of these safety measures, and perhaps it would be good at this time to identify that this was always part of our capital improvement program, is to work on the facade, we just thought we would have more time.
Yes, ma'am, that is exactly the case, thought there would be more time. However, due to the seriousness of this issue, we are formulating a fire safety plan. The Fire Marshal came through here and walked the entire thing and approved our plan. We just need to put it in writing down and submit it to the Fire Chief for approval, and that will also be associated with any permits or anything of that nature once Phase Two goes into progress. So before I ask the court to do anything, I'd like to bring Juan up here to hear the other phases of this, but that concludes mine. Phase One's the safety, do you have any questions about that?
Only that, would you be working with Juan to provide the court a cost estimate? I'm assuming, Juan, that the funding source would be the 2019 COs?
That is correct, Judge. The funding will be from the 2019 COs.
And you, of course, are not ready at this time, but you would let us, you'd give us a cost estimate on this. I mean, whatever it is, we will do, because it's in the interest of safety, but I'm sure there's probably a cost estimate you'll be bringing?
Yes, ma'am. We'll be bringing a cost estimate for the safety measures, and then also, there's the Phase One and the Phase Two and the Phase Three. Phase Two is to do the temporary repairs of the structure itself, and then Phase Three would be to do the permanent repair, I mean, to do the whole facade. One thing that we got to remember, Judge, is that once we do the repairs to this building is that it doesn't fall within the new code requirements, so the windstorm requirements would fall into that. So we'd have to start meeting the new windstorm requirements for the repairs and for the new.
And upon visual inspection, can you see that there are other pieces that are threatening to come off?
Yes, ma'am, there's other pieces up there that you see that are starting to fall off, and they're pretty much kind of hanging there, so...
Pretty big pieces, too.
Yes, sir, there are big pieces, so that's something that we need to look at pretty quick.
And just for the courts, I suppose, information, we also have made the appropriate claims to our insurance company, is that correct, Timothy? We've made the appropriate...
Yes, ma'am, we have. There's some discussion going back and forth right now, it's concerning, I don't want to...
Correct.
...in the public, but yes, it has. Answer your question, yes, ma'am, yes, it has.
Let me, can I ask a question? And I want to make sure we reiterate this. Tell me on these areas, and it's probably more for Juan, or maybe, but tell me on the, it could be risk management, on these areas that we think that are other areas, that's not something we can wait for David to come in and do all this stuff, we got to get up there and, what are we doing to mitigate our damages since our trial lawyer's in the room, so...
In other words, is this an emergency? Is that a good question?
Well, I mean, what are we doing to mitigate the damages? Because I don't want that stuff to fall, because if we know it's there, we have notice, we need to get up there and take some emergency actions.
And you're correct, Commissioner, I mean, but first, we got to do kind of a visual, I mean, we're doing the visual, but we started, need to start putting a plan together, and that's the main thing. We're coordinating with Castro Roofing, and we're also coordinating with, he'll be coordinating with some engineers, and of course, we'll probably be coordinating with David Richter also to kind of assist us in what we can do for, to do the temporaries.
Well, what I guess I'm saying is, that's a lot of coordination, let's get somebody up there and take care of it.
Yes, sir, and that's what, that's what the next...
Like today. No, I'm serious, that stuff's hanging around, and we think there's other particles, we can't wait for that to fall, for our plan to come together.
And I agree with Commissioner, but I think what he's saying is, we need to do two things.
Oh, no, I got it.
Do it, but also you have to be prepared to do it, because something happens, you got to have something in the bottom to catch the fall.
No, I 100% agree.
You got to do, I think the preventative thing is a lot more important right now.
There's got to be a plan.
So how about a motion? Because I think what...
My motion is to go fix whatever we need to fix that's going to fall immediately, because, and then whatever you got to do on the plan, that's fine, I'm just really worried that there's, that we don't get up there, and if anything else falls and we're on notice of it, then we've got, I think, a different set of liability, and we've got to keep people safe. So please get up there.
And so, this is all, it looks like, on the west side of the complex?
Well, it's pretty much on the east side, and then there's some stuff coming off the west side, so it's throughout.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner, it is throughout, but the reason why it looks that way, because we're trying to cut down the majority of the traffic, but it is a 360, sir.
Okay, so it is 360.
That's correct.
So whatever we need, my motion would be that we fix whatever we need to fix immediately to make sure nothing else falls, and then to develop whatever the plan is for the long term.
Yes, sir.
That would be my motion.
Second.
That way we can get it started now.
I would just like to say, I have complete confidence in y'all, it's your job, I think you know what you're doing, and I think you'll do it.
Okay, so...
So it sounds like we have a motion in a second, and we all know that we called this special meeting because of the fact that it is a serious and, in my opinion, an emergency situation, and I think you've presented a smart plan, but you've heard the will of the court, safety first.
That's what we were waiting on, ma'am.
Okay. I need a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Okay. Juan, in order to do what we really need to do, we need to have an expert. Take us through the next agenda item that will help us get one.
Yes, ma'am. Judge, Commissioners, I know on the agenda item, we have, Public Works is recommending the selection of Richter Architects to assist us with the courthouse projects that we have, that we're looking at.
So moved.
Motion in a second. The only discussion I'll add is, I'd like for David to come up and just remind us, you have some special knowledge, and it's good, because we're on television and there's people listening to us. What is that special knowledge with this particular courthouse?
Well, the original courthouse was under construction when I graduated and came back to Corpus Christi, and I went to work for the lead architect on the project as a junior architect. And subsequent to that, after I became a partner in the firm, we continued to do work at the courthouse for many years, and had did, not so much in the last 20 years, but in the early years of the courthouse, like 20, we did many projects, including the Waco Street Jail and quite a few interior projects, and so we...
They're intimately familiar with it.
We have a high degree of familiarity. In fact, I observed a lot of the original construction of the original, and I'm familiar with how the stone tiles are fabricated that are now problematic, and I think the course that the court is taking is warranted, because, you know, it's 45 years, and I think what you may be seeing is a systemic failure in the substrate of that tile is very possible, and so I think you're on the right track, and so I'm happy to help.
And you'll have the ability to hire structural engineers and/or any other engineering specialist in order to get us what we're now calling Phase Two and Phase Three?
Yes, ma'am, and I think, and I do think Phase One is the most important thing, which is safety, and to get some netting up or something to protect from falling, potentially falling...
Objects.
Objects and stone. I think the likelihood of being able to identify and remediate all of the pieces that might fall is, in a short order, is potentially difficult. I think that it's maybe necessary to just get protection up first, and because it will be, there's just too many places that could be at risk. Then I would say, as a part of Phase Two, the short-term remediation, then, not so much engineers, but there are forensic experts on wall systems that could do some in-place testing to see if it is a systemic failure of the substrate, and if it is, then we could step in and help develop a course of action as to how to remediate on a broad scale. But I think that there will be some specialized testing required after the safety is put in place.
Thank you, David, and not to embarrass you, but really to showcase and highlight what incredible professionals we have living in our community. You and your wife are members of every major architectural association that I'm aware of in the country and have been recognized both nationally and internationally for your work, and it just happens to be exciting and such a great feeling for us when we, in our hour of need, that not only do you have special knowledge with this building, but that you are one of the country's foremost architectural firms, and I'm grateful for your service.
Thank you for kind words. We are happy to help here. This building is physically close to us, we're only a few blocks away, it's close to our hearts as citizens here, and also because of our history here, so we stand ready to assist you.
Commissioner Mattis?
Yes, Judge, Mr. Richter. So typically, I guess, this type of tile or just maybe laying tile in general, I mean, I guess, over time, it requires maintenance, upkeep, monitoring, really. Would you say that?
Yes, it absolutely does, and without getting too much in the weeds, but I think, I'm sure you all are interested in detail on this, because it affects, you know, your decision-making. But this is a very special type of installation of tile. It was installed sort of backwards. You think of tile as being applied to a surface, but these tiles were laid onto the inside of the formwork, and then concrete was poured against the tile, so that the tile was actually there first and the wall came second, and then the whole system got put up. And the sequence was, they laid tile down against a form, and then they put what is called a dry mix, which in order to keep the liquid of the concrete from seeping through and damaging the tile, they lined it with like an inch of dry mix, relatively dry, not perfectly dry, to stick the tile to, and then they poured the concrete against that. So it's that inch or so of dry mix that's at risk, that can, if it fails, it could just sort of separate. And so the idea that that makes it particularly difficult to remediate, because you may have to rebuild that substrate as well, you may have to take it all off. I mean, the first thing to identify is whether or not it's, whether or not there's a reason for it to be localized, or if it's just progressive and it's just continuing. And so it's going to be a little tricky, is what I'm saying, you know, so getting to the right answer is not automatic, because it's a very special kind of condition.
Thank you. Thank you. We do have a motion in a second, and I'll call the question, all those in favor of the election of Richter Architects or services related to the courthouse. Signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. You have a big job, but we know you're up to the task. Thank you. Commissioners, at this time, in the interest of respecting our fellow governmental entities that are here with us, I'm going to skip number four and go to number five, and we'll come back to number four. Is there a member of Welder Leshen here? Am I being rude here? Okay, good, so we'll get to Welder Leshen, if that's all right, item, after we discuss and consider options for funding a drainage project, including permitting and environmental assessments related to the city of Corpus Christi and Nuasis County's collaboration on North Beach as it affects the tax investment, I'm sorry, tax increment reinvestment zone, number four. And I also have, I have some folks here I know that want to speak on this issue, although I don't see him, oh, yes, I do, see him in the audience, and I'll allow anyone else who wants to speak on this agenda item to sign our clipboard, but let me, let me try to create a little bit of a structure and framework, and then let me invite Commissioners to make comment, members of the public to make comment, and then I'll put forth the motion for consideration. First, let me begin by saying that, as you know, Commissioners and audience, the city and the county have held a series of workshops, first to discuss the tax increment reinvestment zone on North Beach, and then subsequently, just to discuss the canal itself. And these series of workshops are really an opportunity to bring us... And, um, these series of workshops are really, um, an opportunity to bring us all together in bonk, and to be able to have a really frank and honest discussion, and say certainly prove to be that. But there's also been two years' worth of, uh, task force meetings, and, oh my goodness, endless meetings with regards to, uh, some of the nuances that this project brings and affords. But after our last workshop, um, at the very end, there was something really important that was said, and it really grabbed my attention. And I'm always looking for an opportunity to find, um, a way that collaborative government can assist communities. I really, um, I just, it's, it's part of my core to do that. And so, what I heard the city say was that there was a piece that was an unknown, and that piece was the environmental, uh, assessment piece and the permitting piece. And there was a big concern, and maybe even the word fear might be appropriate to say, and who is going to, you know, pay for these items? And how are we going to address these major, uh, issues that are part and parcel of, uh, of a question that might get called, and in fact, does appear to be on the city agenda? And when I heard that, it reminded me of a project a long time ago, but that we are all intimately familiar with, called Packery Channel. And back in nineteen ninety-seven, uh, this county, um, engaged in a cooperative effort, and I absolutely have a copy of that cooperative effort. It was called the Packery Channel Feasibility Study, Bay Circulation and Water Level. It was conducted by John Michael and Naismith Engineering, and, um, I won't, um, I have it available for any commissioner, but I just want to read one line, because it's, it's really why we're here today. Um, back in nineteen ninety-seven, this was probably the most significant infrastructure project our region had ever undertaken. And, um, this work described in this report was authorized on February twelfth, nineteen ninety-six, and, um, there is a line here that I'm going to read, and it says that "These reports were prepared under contract with Naismith Engineering, Inc., as part of a cooperative effort involving several studies approved by Nueces County Commissioners' Court, Texas." And then it goes forth to describe all the different entities that we worked with, and they all sound very familiar, Texas A&amp;M University, uh, the Blucher, Conrad Blucher Institute, the Division of Coastal and Estuarine Processes of the Blucher Institute, uh, City of Corpus Christi, of course, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, Galveston District, National Geophysical Data Center, and the like. This is a really, this is a history lesson, basically, that we are proper in the opportunity to discuss before us an option for Nueces County, once again, to come and be a part of a cooperative effort where we can help. And so, how can we help? Well, Nueces County is genuinely blessed. We're blessed because we've assembled a team, not for this project per se, but it, it affords us the opportunity to lend our talent and our expertise and our resources to this project. But we assembled a dream team because we knew, over a year ago, that we would receive, most likely through HUD, CDBG, funding after Hurricane Harvey, for a variety of, um, avenues. But we knew that flood mitigation would be part of it. We also knew, because we were active in the legislature, that because of Proposition Eight, um, we would most likely have one point seven billion dollars in funding through Texas Water Development Board loan grants, also for flood mitigation. We also know, because of Commissioner Vaughn's work at the North Beach Task Force and her involvement there, that, um, we had a serious drainage problem, uh, that had a possible solution. After urban engineering was, uh, given the opportunity to investigate those solutions, and a canal was vetted as one of three possible remedies, it's been incumbent upon the city to have all these discussions. But where we come in is, quite frankly, our grants department has expertise in, in finding those avenues, the, opening those doors for exactly this type of work. Because the city does not have a grant department, grants department, and we do, we have often served as a conduit for the city. When I joined, um, uh, the county here on January first, I think it was January second, that Grants Department came to me and asked for my signature for a one million dollar grant that we're currently still awaiting, uh, notice of for actually a drainage study. Uh, our partners were the city of Corpus Christi. So precedent is without a doubt, um, been established. And, um, and so, because we have this grants department, um, we happen to be perfectly situated to assist. But really, what makes us incredibly unique is our coastal parks department. Having dealt with Restore Act, Go Mesa, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, um, Texas Parks and Wildlife, TCEQ, the General Land Office, and other regulatory bodies, FEMA, for decades, in not only creating our coastal management plan, but in being successful in receiving both federal and state dollars, using all our resources, um, for those organizations. We sit in a very unique place to be able to help our friends at the city in this permitting environment and in this environmental impact assessment environment. In other words, in plain English, we do this all the time, and we do it well. And the reason we do it well is because Coastal Parks has had a lot of experience and is led by someone who's intimately familiar with the processes, and he's here today as a resource, um, commissioners, for that. Let me say that, um, I talked about my dream team. Because of the legislative's, uh, because of the legislature's, uh, session this year, we put together a dream team of Patricia Shipton, Ugo Berlanga, and Joel Romo, all of whom have terrific, um, track records with the General Land Office and with the, um, with the Parks and Wildlife Board and with TCEQ. On the federal side, we're represented by Tim Richardson. Tim Richardson also represents Jefferson County, and they've received over a hundred and fifty million dollars in federal funding, um, to date. And Tim represents us in the, um, in the federal world of Restore and Go Mesa funding. Again, maybe this wasn't the idea, we weren't thinking about North Beach, but boy, are we ready to help the city because of this team that we have assembled. And to be honest with you, there's about ten other resources that I don't have time to go into, but those are our, our major building blocks. So what I am advocating, commissioners, for today is an opportunity to help, to assist our community. I want to read something that, um, Ray Paramin wrote. Um, he is the go-to man for economic development in Texas. He doesn't just advise governors, he's advised every president back to Gerald Ford. He is the singular most listened-to economist in the country, in my opinion, and as deemed by his colleagues. He is the head of the Paramin Group, and he serves as the distinguished professor at the International Institute for Advanced Studies. And basically, what he says is, um, "A company seeking to locate or expand is going to be of necessity, initially concerned with the fundamental factors that impact its success. Some of these items are beyond the control of local or state entities, such as proximity to customers, suppliers, or required raw materials. Others, including public education, workforce training, infrastructure, tax policy, regulatory matters, and quality of place, can be affected by community decisions. Incentives are often a critical element of that final decision." I've provided this con, this article for you to read that was, um, issued, actually, uh, yesterday, Sunday, December eighth. I didn't call him, although I know him very well, and tell him to write this, but he couldn't have said it any better. Infrastructure has a direct link with the economic prosperity of a community. And the reason I'm so passionate about this is because we will be sorry if we do not act upon opportunities in our community. And so, the most important thing that we can do is provide assistance where we can. Money will be needed for permits and for environmental impact. Because of COs that were given to this county and to this county judge's office in twenty sixteen, I believe the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is appropriate to be allocated towards permitting and environmental impact. I'm gonna call Scott Cross, because I'm gonna ask him to explain where those numbers came from and why we think those are good numbers to allocate.
Judge, just for sake of discussion, I'd, I'd make the motion to do that, obviously contingent upon the city moving forward in the proper manner, or we don't-
Absolutely.
-worry without their commitment, but I would make that motion.
Absolutely. Motion and second is heard. Scott, why don't you come on up and just tell me, I, I pose some questions to you that the other commissioners have not had the opportunity to hear, and, um, uh, why don't you tell, tell us a little bit about what you know permitting processes can, can range? I'm not gonna believe that you're gonna know the exact dollar amount, but you've, you've dealt with Section Ten permits before, haven't you, from the Corps of Engineers?
Hello, yeah. Okay. Uh, section, hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Um, Section Ten, Section four oh four, uh, kind of the, the, um, permitting realm that I work in with the Corps of Engineers, but that also brings in the other regulatory agencies, TCEQ, GLO, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, EPA, District Six out of Dallas-Fort Worth. There's also Section Seven Consultation, which falls under U.S. Fish and Wildlife under Endangered Species Act. These, this permitting process, it can be, um, kind of fatiguing, but it, the, the process is what the process is. I mean, it, it, it takes some time, depending on the, uh, the details of your project and the kind of impacts you're gonna have, and then you've got to negotiate the mitigation rate, what you're gonna do. You know, there's, there's a lot of back and forth that goes through this permit process with comments from regulatory agencies, and, you know, it's, it's, it's really, I mean, it's like you're bartering back and forth to figure out, okay, what can we live with, what can't we live with? And so, um, but it's, 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 the process is already there. But, I talked to the judge, she had asked me about some of this, um, over the past week, week and a half, two weeks. I told her, I said, you know, a lot of people that aren't familiar with going through a pretty, you know, detailed environmental permitting process would be kind of hesitant, they would be scared, they wouldn't know the, all the ins and outs, but it's, it's, it's out there, you just follow it, and it just takes time. Um, I told the judge, I thought for probably around a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, you could, uh, do your permitting, and then fifty-four to sixty thousand, you could do your environmental impact assessment, phase one. And just because you do phase one, doesn't mean you have to go into phase two. Um, it's, it'd be fifty-fifty whether you would go into a phase two on this kind of a project, but, um, it's, I mean, there, there, she's right, there's money out there, you know, to try to get us reimbursed. I mean, just like the meeting we went to over in Rockport, I was looking at this, uh, you were there, and so, um, there are several, several line items here underneath this hazard mitigation project, our, our program with the GLO sponsoring, that would, that would cover some of this, so-
So even though the court might choose to, if you will, advance the funding and allocate, you believe that there is an opportunity, uh, to, to be able to be reimbursed, because there's so many dollars out there that are available for this exact type of project, and because we have a grants department, they can pursue that?
Yeah, and it would be important to also figure out with some of these programs here which ones you can spend and get reimbursed on. That's something you gotta be careful with, with a lot of grants. You'd have to be some vetting of that. And, but, one of the first things I would do is, I would, I would get what's called a JEM, a Joint Evaluation Meeting. These are meetings that are, they're, they're not an official meeting, they're in an unofficial capacity, but you bring all the regulatory agencies in with your plan, so to speak, of what you're going to do, not your long-term development plan of North Beach, just your, your drainage plan. And you go in and you look at that, and it's, it's in a, it's in a setting that's very productive. I just got through doing one for the pier, and you get a lot of comment and a lot of input that you otherwise wouldn't get through an official process.
And you use that input, then, to create design in the most, um, I guess, acceptable way?
Yeah, you put it all in your, in your official application. What you're doing is, you're trying to cut down on the time that it takes with the, all the back and forth with the regulatory agencies. And so, if you know what their issues of concern are gonna be, you capture them right then and there, and you move on, and you get that in your, in, in your official permit. You can do the same thing with Fish, or, yes, Fish and Wildlife, under an, uh, an unofficial Section Seven consultation with them as well. Like, for instance, that mine that I went to, Fish was not able to be there. We did it over here at the GLO office, but I'd already met with them prior to going there, so already knew what they were gonna be-
So, so you're very, um, you're very well-connected in the sense of you have a great relationship in working, professional relationship with Ms. Nunez of GLO, the Core, the Core, the local Core, the local U.S. Fish, um, TCEQ, and the like. In other words, this is part of your, this is, the, this is very much in your-
Wheelhouse?
Wheelhouse.
Yes, ma'am. And, and, and what I've always done, um, and it's, it's, it's important, and I think it's important to say here, is that even whether, whether something requires what's called an individual permit, which is also pined on by all the regulatory agencies, or nationwide, nationwide permits the court can issue themselves under these, their guidelines, and you don't get all the agency comment and have all the back and forth. But even without that, I've, over the past eleven years that I've been here, I've always tried to engage these agencies in everything we're doing, whether it needs a permit or not, because it makes them feel vested, and it's a way of helping them carry out their environmental mission. And it pays dividends, because they like to be in the know.
And you work also with the educational, the higher educational institutions-
Oh, yeah.
-like Texas A&amp;M Heart, and UT M.A.S.I., and Conrad Blucher.
Yeah.
And that's very much also a part of your, of your day-to-day, um, wheelhouse as well.
Yep.
Judge, I think this is great. I think we had a, I mean, I, I don't want to have any other questions on it, I think it's a great proposal. I think we talked about helping the city where we could. I think this is a great way to do it, and put our, kind of put our money where our mouth is to, to help this move along. Again, I think the motion was to, just contingent upon them agreeing to do their part to, I guess, to build the canal, or to whatever it takes, but I, I think we, you know, this is a great concept to move forward on.
And, and I know we have other comments here, and the reason I'm kind of going through it like this is because we do have members of the city council, we do have the city manager, we do have assistant city manager, and I'm not trying to create testimony, but I am trying to give them a real insight as to some of the resources, so rather than just, it sounds like we have some will, which is exciting, but I also want to lay the predicate for them, because it's very helpful for them to see what the resources are, uh, department-wide, and, um, so anyway, with that, Commissioner Vaughn.
Thank you, Judge, for all your work. You've really educated yourself on this, and I think your experience would be invaluable, but I always like to cut to the chase. So, you know, I don't know if this is gonna pass, the whole concept of the canal is gonna pass with the city on Tuesday, don't know, but I would just be interested to know if the city is even interested in us partnering, doing this and working together, because I think it sends such a great message to the citizens when we work together, we save money by doing that, so I would just be interested, Judge, if the city is interested.
Okay. Okay, and, and I'll sign up, uh, uh, if there's anybody from the city or, that wants to just say something, all you have to do is put your name on this, I can do it for you. You just have to, I mean, I think that's something that, that is, that is, would be helpful.
It's not public comment, Judge, it's an agenda item. I think you don't have to sign it.
I know, I just put the agenda item on.
Okay.
Just for the court's clerk.
Judge, we appreciate, from my standpoint, and cities, first of all, Rudy Garza, city council, uh, at large, uh, from my viewpoint, being part of the city council and city, uh, we appreciate the efforts that you're making in order to try to help us move this project along. Uh, I think it, it represents great benefits to North Beach and to the area. It's, it'd be a signature project, and, uh, and again, I just want to, want to say my, my sincere gratitude and my appreciation for, for the support that the, that the county and, and the Commissioners Court's giving us. Thank you.
Thank you. And also, I know we have, uh, Ugo Berlanga here, and he wants to give a report. There was an intergovernmental hearing that was held on Thursday in Austin. Senator Eddie Lucio is the chair, and I thought it was incred, just for us to know, hey, we're on it, our, all of our team was there, um, we were represented well, but what was exciting is the very next day, it afforded me, as your county judge, the opportunity to sit in front of Mark Havens, deputy clerk at the General Land Office, and the Intergovernmental Affairs Director, I can't marry Maria Ellen's last name, and Heather, Maria Heather's last name, for who's the head of, of the mitigation, uh, La Grone, and I was able to discuss with them not only this project, but all of the Nueces County, uh, drainage, uh, assessment that, that we're about to undertake, and I, I'm able to do that because we have such a strong legislative team. So, within twenty-four hours of that hearing, where they said they wanted to hear from local leaders, I am inside the GLO's office, and while they didn't know anything about this North Beach project, they were incredibly interested, and, and they're interested in Nueces County's, um, drainage projects as a whole, and what Ugo's gonna give us is a little rendition of the dollars that are available to the city. Now, what we're talking about in the motion is the two fifty, but Hugo, tell us what's really out there to help the city with because of our granting department.
Well, first of all, let me just echo what you had said earlier.
Well, first of all, let me just echo what you had said earlier. I think the county is, is well situated because of the people that you have in place. There's no question that with Mr. Cross and his inner relationships with the various agencies is a huge plus for us. The fact that we have a legislative team that knows its way around is, is also incredible. We got Tim Richardson, who was the person responsible for putting the Restore Act in its first place, some years ago, when the Exxon Valdez accident happened. He is still drawing money for Kodiak Island in Alaska. And so, uh, just a quick rundown, the, there's no question that there is Deepwater Horizon funding options to this community. And if we continue to just sit back and not take advantage or go after it, then it's gonna be an opportunity lost. Now, years ago, we attempted to try to represent the coastal bend. We weren't successful, but it's okay. We, we ended up representing Jefferson County. And Jefferson County has been the net benefactor of a hundred and fifty million dollars. It will continue to receive money. So what I'm telling you is that there's money still there. It will be there through 2031, 2031. So hopefully, this will not be the only project that will be, you know, going after money. Now, the other thing that's important is that there is money available under bucket one. Uh, and then there's this project, this North Beach project would be eligible under, under, under bucket one. It would also be eligible for about 25% of the money that's available under bucket three. Now, what's interesting is that when you look at the caption that, that created the deep, uh, uh, Water Horizon Act, RESTORE stands for Resources, Ecosystem Sustainability, Sustainability, Tourist Opportunities, and Revived Economies, Economies. We fit every category on, under that caption. But the other thing that's interesting is that we're not talking about re, trying to reinvent the wheel. And you've got a handout that I think you, you should have, if you have the opportunity, go to the, to the innovation that was done at Staten, Staten Island in New York, the living breakwater. And there's a, there's a, uh, website you can go to. There's a little video and a narrative. And this is almost a duplication of what we're trying to do, or this community is trying to do collaboratively for North Beach. And let me just tell you, the Atlantic's, the Atlantic Sea is a lot harder and harsh than what we're gonna be dealing with here on, on North Beach. But we have a great opportunity, uh, to, and if you'll read your handout, to, to really have this collaboration. The other thing that's important is that the port's future, the port's future, our driving engine, is the need for dredge material placement from the deepening of our port. This is absolutely incredible opportunity for them to utilize that to provide the breakwaters that, that everybody's talking about. So, I mean, the, the, the moving parts of this is just phenomenal. I mean, we couldn't have written a better script, that the timing elements of what the port's doing, what the city hopefully will do, what the county can participate in, if that's, at, at this level, and having it all come together. It's a win-win. Let me just tell you something. I think it's a huge game changer for this community and for North Beach. I mean, I remember, I'm a lot older than all y'all sitting here, but I remember years, you know, 50, 60 years ago, enjoying North Beach. And even then, it was nowhere near that. Now, the only other person that enjoyed it more than I did was Judge Jack.
[laughing]
And, uh, cause he was there every weekend. And, uh, but, you know, but what has happened and what has transpired. But the taking down of the bridge is opening up that opportunity where, where we split that community of North Beach with the construction of the original north, I mean, uh, Harbor Bridge. It's now coming down and now we're reopening that opportunity. And so, again, funding is available. You've got the team in place. We're ready to go to work, I mean, at a, at a, at a minute's notice. I hope you'll have time to, to look at the information that I've provided you, to kind of get you a glimpse. But look at the Staten Island, uh, project. It almost mirrors what we're trying to do here and, uh, for a lot less money.
And, and I'm gonna ask, you provided the commissioners with a nice synopsis. I don't think there's anything proprietary. You've got folks from the city. If you wouldn't mind, I'll give them my copy if, if you don't have an extra one, and I'll get one other one printed. But this really does outline the federal, the federal dollars. This has nothing to do with the, the $4 billion of mitigation money, and it has nothing to do with the 1.7 in cheap TWDB loans coming. Uh, this is more billions of dollars. And what you're saying is, is that, that, um, we meet all the criteria for this project. So one of the major concerns I've heard, it's very valid, is they're worried about the extension of dollars, you know, beyond what the comfort zone is, which is around that 40 to 50 million dollar comfort zone. And what you're saying is that we have the team in place and it's ripe and it's, and it fits the, what they're looking for, to be able to go chase these dollars and that nobody has done it. We have not been the recipient of any of these types of dollars, save and accept the 22 million Scott Cross got for us from coastal parks, which we've utilized. But when you compare that to Jefferson County, you know, it's our turn. And we need to advance these projects. And, um, and so I think that that's very important. I think this would be a good document to, to hand out.
This also dovetails, and here's the other thing that's significant, with Toby Baker, who heads the team for, for Texas. It's music to their ears when they have communities that are willing to put some money up, because then you have, now everybody's got skin in the game. It's a, it's a different deal because what happens is you're out there competing. And when other communities step up to the plate and bring money to the table and the resources, and then you don't, guess who's gonna, guess who's gonna have the first shot?
That's right.
And, and so-
Well, and, and also, we did not address GO Mesa funding. And I don't want Commissioner Chesney to panic because he relies on GO Mesa funding for his precinct. But it's gone up from 444,000 a year over last to 666,000. I spoke with, as I said, deputy clerk on Friday, Havens, the GLO. He told me that it's gone from, I believe, uh, eight million to 45 million in the last decade for the general land office for the school kids of, of Texas. And GO Mesa is going to continue the trend for increased funding. I also believe that, that this, that we could, in the future, continue our allocation, commissioners, uh, possibly through GO Mesa. GO Mesa specifically looks for permit and for environmental impact. Again, you have to understand these buckets of money. You gotta have the right team, the right advocacy, and the right, the right, quite frankly, attitude. But I think that we're leaving even more on the table. Uh, we, we're just only able to, to bring forth today so much, but-
Like, again, GO Mesa money, there'll be 90 million dollars through the year 2031.
Yeah.
That fund is gonna continue to increase. Here's another thing that's interesting. The city and the legislature, time and time again, through GLO, has received money to restore that beach, to restore our beaches. And guess what? It is just a continuation of money being thrown down the drain. And until we really do something significant long-term for the viability of North Beach, then we'll continue to just nickel and dime that situation and keep it presentable. And when we've got an anchor of the Texas State Aquarium, and we have the, the, the Lexington, and it's just, I mean, to think of what the possibilities could be for that area and what it means to this county and to this community is just staggering. And I think that, uh, we need to, uh, it's up to y'all. I'm just telling you that you have options and you have money that are available to you and to this community, that if we don't get them, someone else will. And, and let me just tell you, I think that from, from, from the courthouse to the White House, we will have people's attention when it comes to that, doing this project. Because if I'm running for president, I'm gonna be talking about the, the large, the third largest exporting port in the country.
God forbid, you're not running for president, are you?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Oh, my gosh. You woke me up over here. You scared me.
Let me tell you something. We have an opportunity to really highlight what we're doing here. And I think that, and all the visits and everything else, and we have, I mean, you know, our United States senators, we have our congressmen, we have every opportunity to, to really tap into those resources, because I think they're all willing and, and able to, to provide us the assistance that we need. And then again, this is the decision you've gotta make. It's a policy decision. And hopefully, the, the city, uh, will also adhere to, to doing something that allows the process to move forward and allows the, the, the studies to be done, the environmental impact. And let's just see where we go. But to, to deny that to this community and to just shut it off for no reason, and just say, no, we don't wanna do it because we don't think it's gonna get approved, or we don't think this or that. But you know what? Unless we step up to the plate and move the ball forward, we'll never know. And I think we could have great success based on what has already happened in other areas across the country utilizing the same funding sources.
Well, and, and I do want to point out that I already, uh, Tim Richardson has already, uh, made the phone calls and I will be visiting Tottenville, um, over, probably in January, probably not in December, it's too quick. But I am gonna go get to meet with, uh, with that, with those regulatory agencies. The, the state of New York doesn't have a GLO, but they have something that's the equivalent. And, uh, and we're gonna be able to go and, and get firsthand, uh, experience with their breakwaters, which is different. But again, this is an opportunity to, um, to, to really demonstrate that we have an expertise. You also represent the Port of Corpus Christi as a member of a very large legislative team. And so would you be willing, as, um, our representative, to speak with them about also utilizing their resources? They have a tremendous amount of resources that have not been brought to this table. They are experts in excavating. They are experts in sheet material. They are experts in dredge material. And it's absolutely incumbent upon us to bring all these resources together. We're gonna have to come up with a new word, but JEM sounds pretty darn good. Uh, that's joint interagency, uh, meetings are absolutely what's necessary. I did not ask this, but it's important because the city's here. We're not trying to usurp their authority. Scott, you have worked with city officials on numerous occasions, uh, through Dune Protection. You would be, um, offering to help lead or co-lead, but, um, but you are, you would, you would be willing to work with the city in all of these regards. In other words, it's not like we're gonna take over environmental or take over permitting, but rather that we would, we would be, um, offering leadership and resources.
Correct.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, Manager Zanoni, welcome.
Thank you, Judge. I just wanted to answer Commissioner Vaughn's question in terms of, is the ci, city willing to partner? And I don't, uh, we don't need the answer because we know what it is. The city already is partnering with the county.
Right.
So the city and the county, uh, not too long ago, approved the tours in a collaborative partnership way. Um, both entities have been at the table, the same table, uh, from day one. And so we're still committed to partnering with the county. In fact, the city of Corpus Christi, at least, one of the things I'm focused on is partnership, not just with Nueces County, but with the regional governments, uh, to include Ingleside, uh, San Pack County, all the, all the regional counties. Uh, one of the things we know is that the city of Corpus Christi, um, over the years or decades, has been a, a regional collaborator, regional partner. If we just look at the production of water, uh, the city produces water for our over 300,000 residents. Uh, but in fact, we produce it for 500,000 residents along the, the Gulf Coast. Uh, that includes not only Nueces County, but six other counties. And that just speaks to the, to the point of partnering, uh, as a regional collaborator, uh, to get major events done. So we definitely, uh, will continue to partner with the county. We thank you for, uh, your motion today. And just to clarify, the 250,000 is from existing certificates or is it from grants?
That, that's correct. It would be from existing certificates of obligation, actually dating back to 2016. We also have 2019 available, but we have plenty in, in 2016. I have asked, um, I asked Bobby to stay a little bit later from Estrada Inahosa, cause I wanna triple check. You know, obviously each CO has requirements that it needs to fit. I wanna triple check with him that this would be an appropriate use. But my backstop is, and, and Dale already met with me and our auditor and said he thinks it fits. But we all agree that GO Mesa is a perfect funding source as well. And there could be an allocation, Commissioner, like if I could just have COs, you know, help with IB McGee. I mean, there's a way to reclassify and reallocate. The most important thing is that I would, I would pursue major granting opportunities to help with a variety of subject matters for drainage. Um, but I would also look to, uh, keep our indirect cost allocation, uh, alive and well, so that if there was an opportunity, we could pay ourselves back. I'm always happy to advance fund, but if there's a way to get paid back, we're gonna pursue it. And quite frankly, we have one of the only, uh, indirect cost allocation, um, at no cost to us, software, um, programs, I think, in the state, Maria, with eCivis. We are the, the leader in indirect cost allocation recovery on grants, on federal and state grants. No one, no other county has pursued that. We've got it. It, we, something we just did. So we have a way to keep track of it and then file. So you would get direct allocation. It would be a sure thing if, if it was the will of this court, but then we would also apply to get us paid back. But here's the beauty. I'd be willing to work with, you know, your team to put forth a hundred million dollar grant, because the competition that Tottenville got was a one billion dollar competition from CDBG and they got 60 million for breakwater. What's fascinating is that ours is a two billion dollar allotment. And I confirmed with the GLO on Friday that this would be the type of project that would be, that we could apply for. And they said yes. So I always do my homework because I think the A student is not necessarily the smartest in the class, but boy, is that the student that works the hardest. I've always been an A student. And I think it's because I have a real understanding of how all these things fit. And, um, and you're right, we have so many amazing projects. Uh, we just work together. After that wonderful heated discussion, 30 minutes later, we're on the phone working on a, a good solution for County Road 33. And then we'll turn around and we'll be on a good solution for city-county health or animal, you know, care services. Our, we're not in it for one issue. We're in it for an entire community. And that's what I like about you being here today. I just wanna thank you for your willingness to come and listen and, and see how we can help. But I know 250,000 seems like a drop in the bucket, but boy, is it an important drop. And, and in the sense of it would start us off on the right foot.
Judge, can I just ask, would that be, um, and like I say, that was part of the motion. I guess that would be assuming that the, the city does move forward.
Yes, we could make it contingent upon.
Right. I mean, we wouldn't wanna start something unless the city, I guess, and I'm not trying to-
No, no, I think that's smart.
You don't know how the council's gonna vote, but I would think that would be part of, what we would wanna do is not start any work until the council committed to that, right? I mean-
Sure.
Pardon me?
You may wanna just elaborate what it or that is.
Just means that, I guess, a vote to, but I guess, I'm, I'm guessing would be a, a vote for the council to move forward on the canal would be the appropriate way to tie that in, right?
And we wanted to make sure that you could bring accurate information and not speculation. So that's why, to me, it was important to bring forth this agenda item today so that you would have-
You can tell your counsel-
Something real tomorrow.
Right. Is that, I mean, cause I wouldn't think we would need to spend that money before the council committed to the canal, right? Am I missing something?
Need to spend it before?
I think Belinda wants to say something on the contingency.
And, and we certainly can look into it further, but, um, we might very well need to memorialize this in an agreement before it's spent. So I think today's vote is that it's the will of the court to spend that 250-
And then an interlocal.
-can follow up with any necessary interlocal.
Well, yeah, of course, absolutely. And that would go without saying, I appreciate you saying it though, cause that, that's, that's right. And, and I guess it would just be, because this, this money would be, um, the study and the, for the design of, right? I mean, it would be tied to the canal. So I would think we would still wanna make a contingent, right?
I'm fine. I mean, you can't, there would be no reason to permit something that's not gonna be done, right?
Okay. I just wanna make sure the motion was clear and, but we just wanted, we, yeah, I think depending on how the court votes, I just wanna make sure that you have something to take back. I guess you'll probably have a meeting tomorrow and-
We do, yeah.
Say that we've made a commitment, cause, you know, we did come to your meeting and say if there's ways we can help, that we wanna be able to help. And I, I think this is a significant, um, um, project and hopefully this will help.
Fran, I agree with you. I think it needs to be contingent on approval of the canal. And Mr. Zanoni, thank you for coming forward because there's, it's important that the public hear you say that. You know, you're leading the city. And so a lot of things are out there as always. So it's important they know you do support this, working together. And I know we have done that and that's a good thing.
Yeah, for sure.
So I think we all win when we do that. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner.
You know, I'm listening here, you know, in the last meeting, we were at the city council and I know we got hit at discussions and, you know, people kind of threw rocks both ways, I guess. And, uh, I was really saddened by the thing, the way things got out of hand. But, you know, and after the meeting, uh, I told, in fact, I talked to the judge and I said, Judge, uh, how much are we putting into this at that time? She said, nothing. And I said, and we're pushing like bulldogs to get this guy to spend the money and we're not doing, and I put no money in there. Why? I mean, it's our money. They should do whatever they want with it. You know, if we wanna skin in the game, like somebody else said, and I think if we wanna really be a skin in the game and we believe in it as much as we do, and what do we wanna commit? Three million dollars. That's our contribution. I mean, I think if we wanna really talk, we're putting your money where your mouth is, you know, all I hear is, we're fighting for it, but it wants it. Well, let's, 200,000 dollars, nothing. Let's put 3 million dollars and say, hey, let's go for it. You know, maybe it'll encourage the city to say, you know what, we really, they're really our partners. Let's do it.
I would just disagree with you on something, um-
Well, I'm, I'm not finished yet.
It's, it's a nice thought. It's, it's not the city's money. It's- It's, it's not the city's money, it's not the county's money, it's the citizens' money.
It's all right, but they're, but it's coming from their budget, not ours. So the, the other thing is, and I thought about that, Judge, and you and I both talked about it and, you know, I was, I came back and I really, I was, in fact, I was going to put in the agenda for the next meeting, you know, and, and I saw it on the agenda for today. So I just, you know, I, it's, some, I know it's difficult to spend your money in, in certain things. I'm not truly convinced that the canal will be, uh, is not this solution, might be a part of this solution, you know, and, and, and I don't know how you would, uh, keep the canal clean, I guess. There's a lot of questions still that I have, you know, and I'm, I'm for the project. I know, believe me, and we need something in North Beach bad, you know, and it's something that we've been all way overdue, you know, and, um, and, and, um, those people there deserve, you know, to be helped, like anybody else. And today we hear all these monies and all these grants and, you know, and, and this is great, but you know, I sit here, Judge, for almost 10 years and we never had this kind of conversation for the colonias, for the drainage problems we have there, about investing all this money, you know, for the drainages that, that should be done a long time ago and keep flooding our colonias and keep flooding those people, you know? We got major drainage areas there, ditches that need to be, Commissioner Modis and mine and the Fiesta, the, the, I mean, I don't hear nobody going after grants. Every night I took, I took monies and, you know, we bring this up and up and we know what the problem is, but nobody brings, you know, brings it up. You know, A student, well, I'm an A student, I guess, when it comes to the colonias and comes to the drainage and to the flooding in the colonias. But you know, uh, just like we're doing here in North Beach, we should be also coming to the table and say, "What can we do for those people on the west side?" You know, get them out of the floods and get them, how much, how much grant we're going to go for to, to help them, you know, rain those ditches that, that won't be flooded.
And, and that's why we have the $144 million grant pending with TCEQ. That is for Petronilla, that is for the colonias, and that's probably the single biggest grant this county has ever put forward.
Not to say something, put in advance like we're going to do here. I mean, you know, why not? I mean, why not, we investing in one and not the other? But I, I really think that if we're really going to invest, I, I mean, I go with $3 million, you know, we're going to invest, that's my choice. I mean, that's.
Well, I, I appreciate that. I'll, I'll tell you that when you start looking at indirect cost allocations, you're going to be shocked how fast we're going to get to $3 million. That's what I love about tracking through indirect costs. I don't know if you guys do that. You don't have a grants department, but I bet you have some sort of a mechanism where you, I know that because of TERS, you obviously have some mechanism. We will do that too, but what I'm really, and I'm not opposed to, to doing, if you have any proposal from the city's perspective for this county, we're here. Come, come and definitely bring it, bring it forth. But what I do know is that the type of funding that is out there that we're talking about, and it's going to be for our entire county, not just for North Beach. It's just that North Beach happens to present a project right now. I think you're looking at a $100 million project that might even pay back that canal, but it's only a backstop, right? It can only be a backstop. But again, everything that I know and everything that we've been prepping for is, indicates that this is the right type of project that would, that would attract, um, the regulatory agencies to say yes to this project. One last thing, you know, last court, Commissioner Gonzalez, we approve, we, thanks to everybody's help here, we appropriated a, um, an RFQ to get a engineering study, Nuasis County Drainage Assessment. We will know where we're supposed to be concentrating once we get that assessment. It will be for the west side, it'll be for, uh, the northwest side, you know, it'll be for agricultural community and it will be for, for North Beach as well as Port Aransas. So I think it's really important that you know that if you think about it, I'm not sure how much that assessment will come, you know, come to cost us, but I bet it's going to be a pretty sizable amount. And so when you couple that with the 250,000, I feel like we are making close to probably, I don't know, but let's say somewhere around another half a million dollars worth of investment on our.
Make a motion, we start with $2 million.
Can I just add two things, two more things and I'm, I'll sit down.
Sure.
I did want to thank Commissioner, Commissioner Gonzalez for reaching out to me several months ago to partner, we talked about partnerships, uh, to partner funding for the Junior Beck Road.
Yes.
That's been on the books for a long time and I, I had never met Commissioner Gonzalez, but he figured my phone number out somehow and we had breakfast and we talked about how can we collaborate on Junior Beck Road. Uh, and so that was approved at the city and I know the commissioner's court is going to approve, uh, your, your contributions soon. And, uh, with that, I just did want to acknowledge no Councilman Guards that spoke and, uh, Councilman Barrera is also here today from the city council.
Yes, I'm sorry, you're blocking him perfectly.
Just want to recognize those two individuals, yes.
I see you rolling, sorry. Thank you for being here. He's literally got you in my, um, and Commissioner Modis.
Thank you, Judge. Uh, and no, thank you, Peter. Uh, this is just in general and I agree, I echo exactly what Commissioner Gonzalez is saying because I feel the same thing. Um, but I think that this is positive for us on the county side because for so long, you know, we put our, our resources and our efforts into countywide issues or sometimes into the rural areas, which are our responsibilities. But I think it's also good to see investment within the city for those who are taxpayers who say, you know, our money is always going outside the city limits and what do we see inside other than the courthouse and, you know, justice is carried out, law enforcement, things like that. But this is a good project to show that there is reinvestment within the, the largest community that we have here in the county. And so I do appreciate, appreciate that opportunity. Uh, to me, I see this as a positive. This is a bigger push for countywide drainage.
Yeah.
For the, for the, the discussion that you and I have had and the visions that we've had for, for many years now on, on pushing a plan and just individual projects that we can go after. I agree, Commissioner Gonzalez, communities like Robstown, Banquete and other areas, Petronilla, that have, uh, needs of drainage, that this starts the conversation. This is, I, I think the perfect conduit to say, "We want to be a good partner with our, with our partners in the city of Corpus Christi, help possibly spur a huge degret, development and boom out there on North Beach." Uh, but also gets us committed to say, once that is done or as we continue to work through that, what else are we going to work on in the other parts that desperately, uh, need it? So, um, and we are doing stuff. I know you're doing work already and with drainage out in Petronilla and other areas and so we're, we're looking at studies as well in the western part. So I, I really appreciate this, Judge, as an opportunity, one, to solve or at least start help with this issue and, and also put our money where our mouth is, right? We, we, we talked a lot last week and we had that opportunity, but also to have that follow-up and say, "Here is some money that we want to put in, some skin in the game." But it goes to the bigger picture that I hope that, you know, you will continue to lead and I'll be there to help support you on, that, uh, we have drainage issues countywide. And so as we look and explore and find other resources that come in, that we can tackle those, uh, because those are just as important as supporting North Beach, uh, that we support those in, in all of our precincts. We all have areas that we can point to that have drainage problems that we must fix. So I, I just think this is a great chance for us to be able to start that and continue to push that forward.
And for Managers Zanoni, I guess if you're going to do a report, I would say that, um, that this has already been approved. It's the way the CIP has it logged in, of course, it's up to the will of the court once we, once we receive the RFQs back and we make a selection for the hydrology engineering assessment. But I have, uh, my, my memory serves me correctly, it's half a million dollars that we put forth for that, for that study. And so it might cost more, it might cost less, but just so you know, the court has that, that, that will be an expertise that we will use regionally, but we will also use, um, as a resource to bring to the table for the city as well. And again, we've never done it before, we've done portions of our community, but we've never done a Nuasis County Drainage Assessment. So, um, if Michael were here, I'd ask him how, how long it's going to take, but somehow my memory said that he would get it posted and, and it would be most likely a January date that we would make that selection for that hydrology engineering group. Um, but that's certainly extra and it's something that you wouldn't, you won't have to spend on because we're already doing it. So that's another really strong resource. And so now I'm remembering my grandmother who said, "Get to it." So all those in favor of the motion that was made by Commissioner Chesney, I believe it was seconded, um, already by Commissioner Vaughn. The motion, uh, for the clerk's edification is that, um, $250,000 be allocated for the purposes of permitting an environmental impact assessment, um, for the North Beach, uh, collaboration with the city of Corpus Christi, uh, contingent upon, of course, that project moving forward. And, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The reason I'm saying aye, Judge, because I support it, but I support $2 million.
I know, and I'm going to ask you to, uh, maybe bring that forward on another agenda item. I just don't want to lose the 250, but I, I know that we probably need to have a, a discussion with the city to see what we would use those dollars for. And of course, for me, I was ready with my funding source for the 250. I need to get ready for where a larger funding source would come from. And so I just need some time to work with Dale and you and, and everybody to see if, if there's a will, but of course, I knew.
I changed mine to.
Okay, but I'm happy to work with you and, and I just took advantage of the fact that at the very end of that workshop, Zanoni said, "Hey, I'm concerned about environmental, I'm concerned about permitting." And that's where I went, "Okay, I know I can help there." But I think if we had further talks, maybe there's something else we can, we can do.
That was my judge, when the engineering, design and planning, that, that was what I was considering.
Yeah, no, I hear you. You, you, that would probably be half of the design, that, which is interesting, I bet they're interested. See, you didn't, you didn't know the guests that keep on giving when you come over here. Um, all right. Uh, thank you for that and, um, we're going to move on. We have just two more items. One is item number four, and then there's a public works item. Item number four is hiring Welder, Leschen, Lorenz, McNiff, Buchanan, Haw. I had no idea that they had so many names. I've always called them Welder, Leschen, to provide legal services related to proposed intergovernmental support agreements with Naval Air Station Corpus Christi, authorized execution of engagement letter. Um, Tyner just got up, but you'll recall that the IGSAs we're pursuing with the military, um, needs to have a, a memorialization of an agreement, Edward.
So moved.
And, okay, just in case, mo, this was vetted by Lauda. Lauda spoke with Welder, Leschen. Belinda, I don't know if you're involved, but I can, I think you can attest to the fact that Lauda did speak and recommends.
And what y'all have before y'all is the draft, just because we don't have the signed one from, um, I think from, um, Mr. Welder, but, um, we should be getting that later today.